Thank you.
We are recording.
All right, thank you, Nick. Okay, then we will begin tonight's meeting. Bear with me. The Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 6, 2021. We're beginning at 6:06. First item on the agenda is the call or the pledge of allegiance, excuse me. I, for the sake of ease, I'm happy to lead off. So do we have a flag or anything we want to? No. All right. Oh, wait, Mark's got something. That works. Thank you, Mark. All right. You guys ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mark. All right, moving on to audience comments. This might take a while. There's a lot in the audience. So seeing none, we're going to move on to business item number three. And approval of minutes, which as we've already discussed, we do not have a quorum present this evening that was present for the February 2nd meeting. So the February 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting minutes will be tabled till the next meeting. Which then brings us down to bullet four, business items. We'll start with four A. Public hearing ordinance amending portion municipal code 20.04, timing of the comp plan amendment submittals.
All right, and I can go ahead and speak to this one real quickly.
Thank you.
Currently, the city is process for filing amendments to amend the comprehensive plan. It applies to citizens as well as the city and includes a deadline that applications be submitted by January 31st of any year to be considered during that year's amendment process. And what we've realized is that very frequently on the 31st of January, Public Works doesn't know whether they have specific amendments to the capital facilities element or whether we need to add different projects to the comp plan. And then come April, we realize that they're planning to do a project that needs to get added and they have missed the deadline. So we do want to set a firm deadline for citizen amendments because we can only amend the plan once a year. And when somebody comes in, we want to know what those are at the beginning of the year, but we can, by amending the code to allow city initiated amendments to come in a little bit later, we can take more time to develop the plan and have a more deliberative process rather than rushing on the 31st of January. So this ordinance simply amends some additional language into section two of 20.04060. And that language appears after a comma and says, provided city initiated amendments may be submitted to the director at any time prior to adoption of the final comprehensive plan amendment agenda. So the city, the council has been holding off on adopting the 2021 comprehensive plan agenda because they wanted this amendment to be brought forward first. If you guys can hold a hearing on this tonight and then recommend approval, the council can approve this at their meeting next week, which then means they will approve their 2021 comprehensive plan agenda by the end of the month, which is the deadline for doing so. And so this is a very time sensitive issue. Are there any questions?
No, hearing none.
All right, you do have to open and close the hearing.
Okay, well, I will open the public hearing then regarding yet. Bear with me, I have to move the screen. Gordinis amending POMC 20.04, timing of comp plan amendments and middles. Anyone in the public like to comment? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move on to business item 4B for discussion recommendation of the planning commission.
Well, personally, I don't think that this really needs a lot of discussion, so I'd like to go ahead and make the motion. I move to recommend that the city council approve an ordinance amending POMC 20.04 to revise the submittal date requirements for annual comp plan amendment applications.
Excellent, thank you, Trish. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, was that Dave that second or? Okay, thank you, Dave. All right. Motion carries then. Moving on, wow, we are cruising.
Wait, don't we need to vote?
Oh, details. Okay, all in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, motion carries. Thank you for the reminder. Oh, jeez. Okay. So that closes business item 4B and we will open business item 4C, update for the draft downtown sub area plan.
All right, and so the downtown sub area plan, we kicked off in 2020, right before the pandemic began. And of course, this project was greatly complicated by our remote working and remote meeting protocols. We are getting close to the finish line and in your packet tonight, or at least you were provided a link to the document which is on the city website. And we have a draft that is nearing final draft status of the downtown sub area plan. And the version that is on there, it's broken into three chapters and we really haven't made any amendments to chapters one and two since the last time you've seen it. There is a little bit of cleanup that is still needed in chapter one and two. It's not so much substantive, but it describes kind of the process that was followed and just some basic facts have actually changed since we started this. One example is that the shoreline master program has now been adopted and the plan currently that we're adopting refers to us amending that in the future and the future has now come and gone. And so we just need to update some references to some ongoing projects. We also in chapters one and two, we talk about seeking designation as a center through PSRC. And one of the things that we looked at in this study was whether we would qualify to become a regional center and a regional center under the Puget Sound Regional Council framework is required to plan for a certain level of activity. And there are only three regional centers in Kitsap County. There's the Bremerton Industrial Park. There's downtown Bremerton and then Silverdale is designated as a center. And to be a center, you must have an existing level of development in your city that equates to 20 activity units per acre and an activity unit is either a job or a housing unit. And you need to be planning for 45 activity units per acre. And so we were exploring whether it made sense to seek designation as a regional center because regional centers do have a special pot of federal funding that is available for use on transportation and infrastructure type projects. But ultimately, our evaluation showed that we could plan for about 25 activity units per acre under the existing framework and what is proposed in the sub area plan, but getting to 45 was going to require some significant changes that we didn't feel like there was an appetite for in Port Orchard. So we would have had to go significantly taller in our buildings. We would have had to look at zoning changes and kind of the established single family neighborhoods surrounding downtown to upzone those areas. And in discussing it with the mayor and staff, it didn't seem like that was the right thing to do. And so in chapter two, where we're talking about this, this centers strategy and also the the activity units, I think it's under, let's see here, chapter two point. Oh, I'm looking for the right page here. Actually, I might be in the wrong chapter. I think it's at the end of chapter one. If I had a printed copy, I would be able to find it. Okay, yeah, it's section 1.3 talks about the PSRC Urban Countywide Growth Center Framework. And so it still refers to us as being planned as a regional center. When we've actually decided against being a regional center, we're just going to be a county wide center, which is a lower tier type center. It still does a priority for investment and growth, just not to the same level as a downtown Bremerton or a Silverdale. So you will see some minor changes in chapters one and two when this comes back to you for a public hearing next month, but I I think they're really just providing, those chapters are mostly providing background information and context more so than the the elements of our plan going forward. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and bring up chapter three here. And Carrie was able to send you a matrix yesterday that kind of walked through the revisions that have been made in chapter three. And I kind of wanted to to take you through this and show you some of these items as we go through the list. So and first of all, we've spent the most time refining chapter three, because this really is the plan and the vision for our our center. And one of the things that occurred is in during this process is we selected the preferred site for the community event center and we selected the Kitsap Bank, the current bank location as the site of a new community event center. And the bank is now proposing to move next door onto the other side of Orchard Street between Frederick and Orchard where the the swim deck bar used to be, there used to be a pawn shop in that building that was torn down as well. And so once we selected a site, we wanted to update some of the planning graphics and some of the goals and policies to reflect that decision. And then after after the initial draft of the plan came out, those stakeholders, both the bank and the the architect working on designing a community center as well as the private developer on the other side of Bay Street, all had some questions and concerns and kind of we had to have a few meetings to hammer out some details and really figure out how this was going to work to make sure that the the plan and the regulations that would follow are going to be successful in implementing or can be implemented successfully, I should say. So the and I can everybody see the planning document right now? Okay. So one of the things and I want to add to that, we did receive some pretty comprehensive comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife as well as the Suquamish Tribe. And so the tribe communicated a number of concerns to us. And so we were really trying to bend over backwards and make sure that their their voice was being heard and that we weren't you know, ignoring their comments. And so on this first page here, 3.2.1, the west downtown area. One of the things that the tribe really wanted to see was we have several streams that are piped in our downtown that are there is a creek running underground in a pipe. One of them goes right underneath the city hall parking lot and comes out of a pipe next to the the boat launch. There's another stream under Porter Boulevard that comes out near. Actually, I think Annette owns one of these properties here, but it empties out at the Cal Pier. And that property, we've actually identified in other plans as a restoration project where Wash Dot's going to build a bridge to replace the existing culvert. And then there's talk of of doing some estuary restoration on the side of Port Orchard Boulevard here. And so that wasn't reflected in our drawings and we wanted to make sure that that got into the plan. Likewise, the in terms of this this west downtown area, previously, we had a hill climb, basically a staircase going from Bay Street up to Prospect. But it was oriented on the axis of Prospect Street where it was going to shoot out towards the 711. And as part of our site selection process for the community event center, we talked to the 711 owners and, you know, made it, told them of our intention to look at that as a possible preferred site for the community event center. And they were not a willing participant in that sort of transaction. And so the whole downtown has sort of has sort of rotated to where the Prospect Orchard Street alignment is where the hill climb is. And so those buildings have shifted just a bit. Another big change and one of the things the bank would be giving up if they move off of their current location is they really wanted to still feel like they were on the water. And what, when they saw that we were proposing to keep the entire existing Marina parking lot, they really they really felt like they were getting a inferior site to where they are now because of they were going to be looking out over parking lot rather than having sort of more activated public space. And so we really reconfigured the area between the proposed bank building and the waterfront to be partially parking but partially plaza. And so this, there's now a Orchard Street Plaza where Orchard will not be a road anymore. It's going to be a pedestrian plaza. Service vehicles can get in there, but really there's going to be green space on both sides of that plaza and really create a very nice pedestrian scale area in the downtown. They do propose some in building parking at grade. So the surface parking actually would extend under the the back corner of the first floor building. And so we really wanted to show a concept that supported kind of the the early planning work that they're doing for their building. And and their building is really going to be a four sided building, meaning that it doesn't really have a back. It's got to look good from all four sides because all four sides are public spaces. And so our code actually prohibits them from taking vehicle access from from a street. And so we really had to decide, you know, there does have to be a way for cars to get into a parking structure or parking area for this building. And so we've determined that the appropriate places to that is is a loop from the surface parking lot and out to Frederick that would provide circulation through their building. And so there will be some code changes that have to occur to make that possible. As far as the the more historic area of downtown, the map really hasn't changed a whole lot. The we're still proposing that this waterfront parking lot between Sydney and Frederick be narrowed somewhat so that it would be a road with parking on either side, but not currently it's two lanes with parking on either side. And to offset that, the the block on the south side of Bay Street, we did a parking analysis and they are proposing to put about 250 parking stalls on three levels within this building that are going to be tucked into the hillside. And so the the parking offset for what's lost on the waterfront is being replaced within this building. And a lot of that will be commercial parking that is available for the for public use. Carrie, anything else on this page I should mention or that I have missed?
I don't think so, no.
I guess the only other thing I'll say, and it's not shown on this map, you'll see it on the next page. There is a sewer lift station down here that's sort of in the middle of all of this. And so Public Works is designing this new facility that includes a new building. And we really are trying to figure out how to make that attractive and or screened from view so that it is not an eyesore in the middle of all this. There are several examples throughout the region where you have observation decks or other features that are incorporated and we're not sure which direction we're going with that design yet, but we are certainly designing that project and being cognizant of the future plan for this area as much as possible. So this is a little bit more refined drawing, kind of illustrating what what features are shown as well as what improvements are proposed. So the the legend over here, one through 11 corresponds to various projects we've identified in the downtown. As we continue into the east downtown area, I think you've been briefed on this and the imagery really hasn't changed significantly here. But there are goals and policies that support what is on this map that are have been revised and actually correspond to the work we just did on the shoreline master program. And one of those is that the Blackjack Creek Estuary. We have identified this as both a park and a restoration project to really try to open up the estuary and do some enhancement. And in the shoreline master program, we actually changed that from a high intensity use to a what's called an urban conservancy, which is a more restrictive shoreline master program designation. You will also see that there is a piped stream under Bethel. And so Bethel runs down a valley here and there is of course a a water channel there that actually goes underneath the Kentucky Fried Chicken drive through. The Kentucky Fried Chicken drive through is now shown as a future restoration site. So our hope is that and they're actually talking right now about a new location up on Bethel. So they're looking to move out of that building. And so if that building becomes vacated, the idea is that that would be we, the city or another group would try to acquire that to do restoration type work there. I think that's everything on this page.
Nick, if I may ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
In regards to the Blackjack Creek Restoration, is it going to be like a true restoration and that they're actually going to pull out all of the rip rap that's on the shoreline?
I think there would definitely be softening and we would try to widen the channel.
Okay.
But it's limited. So we obviously the green area here is actually right of way on both sides. One side is at a Turner Park. The other side is a portion of the right of way that we lease to the Ford dealership, but we actually control it. So in terms of the pieces that we control, yes, we are identifying that we want to restore within that footprint. And then we have a goal or a policy that encourages restoration even beyond that. But because we don't control the property and it's also fairly valuable for redevelopment, there's probably someplace between where we are today and a full restoration of of this where you would remove all the fill and and we're we're aiming somewhere in the middle there because I don't think it's probably reasonable to just remove all of the fill in this part of downtown.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure. And if anyone else has questions, just feel free to interrupt. In terms of the county campus, the I don't think as much has changed here, although some of the graphics that were in this plan really showed the county campuses being much bigger than just the county owned property. And so we did change on this figure here. This purple area has been constricted down to the courthouse expansion project and we're really limiting what we're calling the county campus because we heard from several people on council why, you know, is the county planning on moving into the neighborhood across the street or what's you know, what's the deal? And so that that's definitely not the intent. Our consultant was just using our existing center boundary for the county campus center, which is currently its own center. Where this red outline that's actually on this map here is the proposed new downtown Port Orchard Center boundary. So we're we're taking two existing centers and we're combining them into one center with one plan. And it has kind of these three distinct areas with within the center. And so I don't, I think the consultant has a little bit more work to do to sort of clean up how that is described because they're consistently calling it the downtown and county campus sub area plan. And really, it's it's just the downtown plan. As we continue through the document, the the block frontage maps haven't changed with, well, there is one exception, and I forgot to mention this on the downtown concept. Currently, you're not allowed to have any access onto a site from Bay Street with a commercial driveway. And so if you build a new building, you have to come in like on this block, it's the residential mixed use block. You would have to enter from Robert Geiger or from Prospect. You're not allowed to come off of Bay Street. But because of the hillside on this block, we realize that there is going to have to be one entrance off of Bay Street to get to the lowest level parking deck. Otherwise, your entire parking structure is going to be taken up with ramps rather than maximizing the parking yield out of that building. And so this building is actually going to need to have an access off of Bay, an access off of Robert Geiger and an access off of Frederick and all of them will access a different level of the garage so that they're not interconnected. They're separated and that will give you more parking within that building. So on the block frontage map, I don't think the block fringe map actually controls that, but there is a zoning change that is needed to make that happen. Another concern that we heard, the county actually owns this block here between Taylor, Smith, Sydney and Klein. And currently they have acquired all but three properties on that block. And it has mixed zoning where some of it is business professional and some of it is public facility. And I can't remember why surface parking lots are permitted outright in business professional, but they are a conditional use permit in the public facility district. But it benefits the county in terms of their plan to develop this surface parking lot, which I'll go back to the page here. They're proposing to make this their parking facility to serve the whole courthouse and alleviate all of the congestion in the neighborhood surrounding the courthouse. So by changing that block all to business professional, you're streamlining the process for them to get that facility built. And obviously, it's it's part of our plan. I don't think that they need to go through a conditional use permit process to to make that happen. And so I was supportive of changing that entire block from the sort of solid blue and then the crosshatch blue. And then over here, you see it's now all proposed to be in crosshatch. Likewise, we have heard from Mr. Nafji and his wife about their property here on Sydney. And so you'll notice that the mixed use the residential mixed use zone has been pulled out around their property. So they are they are getting the zoning change that they have been asking for for the last few months as they've attended our meetings. And so that is included in the the plan as well. The other change that's occurring, and actually this map has an error that we have asked the consultant to correct. But the this block next to City Hall between Frederick, Robert Geiger, Bay Street and Prospect, currently it's in our downtown height overlay district as a four story block. The reason that it was four story when we created the downtown hide overlay district was because we didn't want the adjacent building to dwarf City Hall or to be the same. We wanted it to be smaller and scaled than City Hall. The compromise that we've come up with is we're going to change everything but that. So half of this block is going to be a DHOD five, the other half is next to City Hall will be limited to four stories. And so that's going to give them a little bit of extra height on the Frederick side of that block so that they can help pay for a massive parking garage structure, which is, you know, I think we've told you before, but parking stalls in a structure typically cost $30,000 to $60,000 per stall to build. And so the more units you can get in a building, the easier that's going to be to make a reality. The next map here, this is just showing kind of the the buildable lands current status of land capacity in the area, which parcels are vacant, which ones are planned projects as a pipeline type project and which ones are redevelopable. Actually, seeing this here, it almost seems like this map probably belongs more in chapter two than it does in chapter three, but I don't have an issue including it in chapter three as part of our our future looking plan. In terms of the environment and open space chapter, we Carrie and I and our staff probably caught 10 or 15 grammar errors, corrections and other just minor changes here, or I think one policy might have been duplicated twice or certain things are formatted strange. So there will be some cleanup to the policies and goals, but really not substantive changes. But the thing that is new here is we have actually created the project list of all the things that we hope to do in downtown Port Orchard. It shows the restoration of the stream at Porter Boulevard where it comes out of the Cal Pier. It shows daylighting the stream that comes out of a pipe near City Hall and trying to do some beach restoration. Everything around the community center and the bank project on the waterfront is identified here as well as the the green space to be created between the foot ferry and the community center. And then in the east downtown, you've got the Blackjack Creek Restoration. Project nine is some enhancement. Once the Ford dealership moves hopefully somewhere else in the city that's a a better, a better site for a car dealership, there can be some rip rap removal and enhancement in in this area where the car dealership and the hotel are currently. And then likewise over at the West Bay Center. In terms of circulation, again, there are a number of minor changes here in sort of grammar cleanup. We have identified a project list similar to the environmental projects, but we are, you know, the the main deficiency that we found as far as traffic circulation is the Port Orchard Boulevard intersection with Bay Street. And so that's identified as a future roundabout project. We do want to do something with Klein and Bay Street as well, not because there's a a level of service deficiency here so much as there is a somewhat non-standard intersection that is it's not the best way to move people through an intersection, whether it's pedestrians or vehicles, but we don't have as prescriptive as a solution as a roundabout. I think it may have to be something a little different, but it's certainly going to be added on to our six year street plan. We've got the Frederick Avenue enhancement, new sidewalks and surfacing. Once we do the bank project, there's a project to do the new street along the waterfront. Improvements at Bay and Sydney sidewalk improvements on Harrison out to the waterfront. And then generally Bay Street as a whole, this is project seven from Port Orchard Boulevard all the way to the intersection of Bethel really needs enhancements with sidewalks and streetscaping improvements. There are some areas that flood that need to be elevated. And so there's, there's a whole lot. So you see that seven is basically the entire SR 6166 corridor. And then finally, Mitchell, Guy Wetzel and Bay Street here at West Bay Center are both identified to make a more controlled intersection where you can have safer pedestrian crossing and we don't, we haven't studied that one as much, but we know that something needs to be done there to improve that that area. So that's, that's really the the document. Carrie, I didn't focus on the list as much as I just walked through the document. Is there anything on the list that we should talk about?
Um, not specifically. I mean, if the planning commissioners had a chance to go through that list and if they have any questions, we can certainly elaborate on that. Did anyone?
I'm going to, I'm just going to share the list. I'm going to, I'm just going to share the list real quick and I'll, I'll walk through it. So this list was actually started by our consultant and then after our staff went through it, we added items to the list. So I mentioned the streams that were added. We also clarified that this is one big center rather than two centers that are adjacent to one another. The size of the overall county campus area has been reduced. Oh, the foot ferry was actually not shown on a couple of the maps. And so we went through and made them add the foot ferry on to all of the, the figures. On the environment chapter, we also added goals and policies to encourage low impact development where we're doing parking and transportation projects. We added a goal supporting the restoration of Blackjack Creek. We one of the things that will be coming out in the environmental impact statement is we're, so when development happens in the downtown, we are going to create a new condition under the EIS that says if you are a non-exempt, non-SEPA exempt project, you will have to do what's called a desktop analysis, cultural resources assessment. So basically they prepare a report and also an inadvertent discovery plan that tells you what to do if you find artifacts or human remains. And so that was one of the major concerns from the tribe is that, you know, the, these are usual and accustomed fishing areas and inhabited areas. And so it is, there's a high likelihood of finding things. I know there were issues when City Hall was built and those, those issues probably could have had been handled better at the time. But I, I think that the tribe seems satisfied by what we have proposed. We've also added in the, the background chapter on history, we've added just more recognition of the tribe's presence in the area historically. The environment and open space goal. We've, we've added a whole bunch of goals concerning removal of culverts that are fish barriers, stormwater enhancement and other shoreline type enhancement projects. We removed a policy which encouraged stormwater facilities within the buffers. We really, we really don't want stormwater facilities in the buffer. We want those areas reserved for more public use and enhancement type projects. We talked about daylighting streams. Let's see here. We did include an additional reference to sea level rise from the shoreline master program. Now that the shoreline master program is complete. Let's see here. We, we included a goal to support property acquisition by the county for implementation of their master plan. Let's see here. Oh, there is a, when we described the county government campus, it said that the, the county campus is the heart of downtown or the heart of our area. And I felt like that was our downtown is the heart of the center, not the, not the county building, although it is important. I think I've covered all of the other ones. There is, we did say that the marquee should be replaced rather than will be replaced. And that is, I think that's pretty much everything in terms of the revisions that you will see in the next draft that comes to you for a public hearing next month. So any final thoughts, questions, concerns?
Not for myself. Thank you for the update. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Have we lost Dave or is my screen just gotten smaller? Oh, there he is. Okay.
I think it looks good. Looks like you've taken a lot of consideration on a lot of topics.
Okay. So, so where we're going from here in terms of process, I mentioned that this will come back to you for the public hearing and potential recommendation at your May meeting, which is that what's the data that Carrie made for? Between now and then, I believe we are going to issue the final environmental impact statement. And so the, the environmental review will be complete. And then once you have recommended approval, assuming that you're able to recommend approval at the next meeting and, and that there isn't a whole bunch of public testimony asking for further revisions or, or wanting some sort of change. Our hope would be that you can recommend this for approval and then the city council can take it up and get this adopted in May. Then the, this is really a two-part project. We're, we're adopting the subarea plan. And then we're also, we're approving the EIS and then adopting a planned action ordinance. And so the last step in the process will be the planned action ordinance, which allows development within this area to be permitted under the EIS that we're preparing for the plan. So as long as what you submit to the city is consistent with the plan, you will be able to use the EIS and the EIS will allow for up to a certain level of development before we have to revisit environmental review. And that's something that will help streamline the county's project, the community event center and some of the other development projects we've identified downtown, especially in the area shown on the map here. Our, our hope is to really do some transformative things in the next five to six years as we build out the community event center and hopefully see a new bank headquarters. And then this mixed use project on the south side of Bay Street. So, so that's, that's the plan of action.
Sounds good. Thank you. A question for you. The, the bridge over Blackjack right now has the SEPA determination of non-significance. Does that have anything to do with this or will it affect this?
No, that's, that's a totally separate issue and this is all permitted. Interesting though is that there, there's a mitigation group that is forming and they are looking for projects to mitigate impacts from the Navy. And so they're actually talking about taking this bridge out and widening this whole area and putting in a new bridge in its place. All funded with naval money and it's a private, a private entity that is being formed to do mitigation for the Navy. And so it is possible that, that this, this whole Blackjack Creek area will be, it'll have to go through, you know, US Army Corps permitting. It'll go through a shoreline permitting. It can presumably be done under the SEPA EIS that we're issuing, but it's probably going to be federal and so it'll have to go through a NEPA review as well.
Okay. So the, the seat for the, we're seeing that sign is for what part?
Oh, you know, I think you're seeing a sign for the editor in our park improvements.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay. I just made the assumption it had to do with the, the bridge or Blackjack.
No, no, they're doing, I think they're doing some lighting and improvements in there or there, there's some park improvement project and that's totally separate from this plan.
Got it. Thank you.
So Carrie, is there anything else on the agenda? I think this is it, right?
Planning commission have any other questions? No thoughts, discussion, anything? All right then. Well, I guess with that said, we can adjourn the April 6, 2021 planning commission meeting at 6:44.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks. Have a good evening, everybody.
It was nice seeing you guys.